Yep, we're on. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I welcome you to the December 7th, 2023, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Adjustments and Appeals Board. First of all, I would like to ask that if there's anyone in the audience and you want to speak to any of the cases we have before us tonight, please be sure and register out front with your name and address so we'll just know who's in attendance. And then when we call the case, we'll ask that you come up and give us your name and your address for identification. Tonight, we'll explain while we're here, this board is composed of five persons with two supernumeraries and is empowered by the Alabama State Legislature but appointed by the City Council and is charged with hearing petitions for relief from a literal and strict application of the zoning code. Cases are heard in the order of which they are filed. Motions are made in a positive and each case requires a positive vote of at least four members. A simple majority will not approve an action. The burden of proof for variances and special exceptions rests with the petitioner. Any party agreed by any decision of this board may, within 15 days, file a written notice of appeal to the Circuit Court. I will ask for a roll call.
Fletcher? Mr. Lordy?
Here.
Mr. Bushman?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Yaw?
There.
Okay. Members, we have a little business to take care of. If you have had a chance to review the minutes from the November 2nd meeting, I'll ask you to look over those. If there's any corrections, this is the time to let us know. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting of the minutes of the November 2nd meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Lordy?
Hi.
Mr. Bushman?
Hi.
Mr. Kessler?
Hi.
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Mr. Yaw?
Hi.
Okay. All right. Again, I will ask when we call the case that you will come to the podium and state your name and address. The first case we have before us tonight is case number variance 2023-11. The southwest corner of Celtic Drive and Lanier Road, parcel number 16-05-16-0-002-011.0001 is requesting a variance to Section 4-9-3.3 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant has requested that we continue this to a future meeting, so I'll ask for a motion to continue that to a future meeting.
I move to continue to a future meeting, case number variance 2023-11, southwest corner of Celtic Drive and Lanier Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Lordy?
Hi.
Mr. Bushman?
Hi.
Mr. Kessler?
Hi.
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Mr. Yaw?
Hi.
Okay. All right. We will continue our, if not continue it, but we'll carry that on to a future meeting and the city will let us know when that will be. The next is case number variance 2023-13, 29958 Hardeman Road by Harrison and Gammons PC by Dustin Key is requesting a variance to Section 5-9D to increase the percentage of the area of the accessory building to the area of the residential dwelling from 25% to 35.6% and a variance to Section 4-11 3.5 to increase the maximum 25% lot coverage for main and accessory buildings to 25.72%. These requests are in accordance with Section 10-5 of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. Who is here to present that case? Okay. All right. Carry on. Yes, sir?
I'll say, Mr. Yaw.
Okay.
Requesting a variance. Personality requirement. Specifically, block with a standard increase for the lean-to structure that is attached to a This property is zone AG, not zone residential. AG is agricultural use and the designation actually says that it is designed to protect agricultural use until under designation. Can I come up a little closer?
Sure. The mic's not working. Yeah, that's what I was...
I think you'll get better volume. That's great. Did I need to start over or did you all hear me okay or do you need to start over?
We can hear you now. Go ahead and start over. Yeah, start over. We'll be good.
Okay, I got you. So, we're asking for a variance of approximately 10% of a lean-to structure of Polborn, is what we call it in the South, that is attached to an enclosed carport on my client's property. Essentially, it's 199 square feet is what we're requesting, larger than that variance. This property is zoned AG. It's not zoned residential, which I believe is important. The AG zoning has to do with agriculture and the zoning ordinance. It actually says that that designation is designed to encourage and protect agricultural uses until urbanization is warranted. And if I can come up a little closer to show you on the map. So, this is... Let everyone see this. So, this one is our subject property. This one and this one here are both zoned AG. This one is not. This has no zone. None of these down this row have any... So, just these two properties, again, this is my client, are zoned AG. And also, this is in Limestone County. I didn't mention that. This is technically in Limestone. It is in Limestone County and was annexed into City of Madison.
Let me break you real quick. The properties on the other side, where are they zoned?
They are, I believe, those are actually in HOA. Is that correct? Those are in HOA. And I don't know what they're zoned.
Madison City, Limestone County. So, when it was annexed, then we annexed when I said, we, the city. It's Madison City is Madison County and Limestone County as they annexations have placed.
My client's property is actually unique here in that just that property and one neighbor to the, on one side is zoned and the other ones are not on that, on that street. So, I believe that makes it unique here. And as a part of that, for example, his next door neighbor, under the AG zoning, could put any of these things there. A church, a cemetery, plant nursery, livestock, poultry, cry... All those things are allowed under the AG zoning. So, the next door neighbor could do any of that, but yet my client is only asking for, like I said, 199 square feet of extra surface area for the proportionality requirement for his lean-to. And I do want to really quickly address the reason we got to this point. In the staff report, it does, it makes it sound like my client was told that he could not build this particular structure. That's not exactly correct. What happened is at first, they were speaking about only an enclosed carport. And the planning department did say the first proposal was too large, which was 32 by 35, is that correct? Something like that. So, my client came back with a 30 by 20 enclosed carport, which is acceptable under that proportionality requirement. My client didn't know or did not understand or think that just adding the lean-to would count against that proportionality requirement. And when you, when you read the ordinance here, it is a little bit confusing, especially some of the definitions as to what is, what is not counted there. For example, it mentions if it has a roof impervious to weather. That could be interpreted a few different ways. Technically, no roof is impervious to weather as far as being damaged because any kind of wind could do that. But the way that's written is if the same structure had a different type of roof, such as a tarp, it could be as big as you wanted it, but yet because it has a metal roof, it exceeds that proportionality requirement according to the planning department. But neither here nor there, we believe that just this, this is a very small request that we're asking for here. And to require them to remove this, this lean-to structure, we just think would not be, would not be fair and a strict application here of the zoning ordinance just would cause a lot of undue hardship for my, my client here. And again, how many posts is on this? Three?
For the...
For the lean-to.
Right.
So, there's essentially three poles and then a roof, right? And it's just attached to the side of the garage. So, that's, that's what we're asking for here is just a, a small increase in that. And then also in the lot surface, but the staff report, my understanding is the planning department did not have a problem with that part of it. They just did not recommend the lean-to proportionality to be increased.
City attorney is here tonight. Did you help the board out a little bit about this Madison City ag zoning? And it's...
Single-family residential dwelling. I don't have all in front of me. You did those, those things up there. I think I'll... Independent dwelling.
I actually have it.
Urban cemetery. All the people allowed in.
Right.
Low density, single-family residential. Urban cemeteries, agricultural uses, including present crops, livestock, poultry, plant nursery, cemetery, common land, where there are parks, playgrounds, sports, soccer clubs, six to seven, I'm not sure how much space is in the best of the best of the entire space, whether how much space is in. Preparability, animal hospital, kennel, mobile alarm, subject to particles.
Okay. Yeah. Now, I just, I think that's a good education for us to understand and the... So, we were here last month.
Yes.
With this. And for this board and what we know, not to say that you can't take this decision further, but for what we do, we understand that the City of Madison has requirements as a city. Yeah, the zoning is ag, but that a 30 by 20 building permit, a permit was issued for a structure, metal structure, no problems with the structure itself or the color or any of those things, but that it was approved for a 30 by 20 based on lot size percentage and all those things. And then the, and on the building permit, the applicant checked the box that he was acting as the general contractor. And in the contractor's statement, I sort of find acknowledged, I had fully read this application, that all information provided here and it's true and correct and it all works for which the permit may be issued and performed and completed as described above and that it is conformed to all city code sections and ordinances, all applicable state and federal laws and plans and specifications here with submitted. And a plan was submitted for a 30 by 20. That was on July the 17th, 20 by 23, signed by applicant, is that right, majority?
Yes.
And, but then you decided you wanted something bigger.
No.
So...
Incorrect. I first applied, my first permit application on the 17th, both for the 35 by the original structure. I didn't print it out, but then the city said that I can't do that and wouldn't be able to get a permit for that. So, we redesigned it so it would be smaller, hence the lean-to coming in. At first, it was just going to be a big carport.
Because I think you told us last month that you didn't understand when you were talking to the guy that you ordered the building from that you thought you were ordering the smaller one, but then the bigger one came in and...
Well, the dimensions of the bill, the smaller building, the wall for the RV, I thought were what they, what they sent us in 30 by 20, which is why I went by that.
Right.
But it was actually bigger, but the lean-to initially...
It was something you added to it. You added the lean-to. And... Okay. Any of the other members have any questions or... Yeah, I think it's part of the email from the shooting.
Okay. Can you discuss the footing, the footing inspection and why it didn't pass?
Yeah, I don't even know why that's in the staff report because inspections sometimes fail in construction and we're addressing that right now. The, the footing was actually put around, the way we were expected to build a building in the first time was around the entire perimeter, which is we had to change the design because the city said we couldn't build the 35 by 32 of it. There is no, according to the city, it needs to have a, a footing all the way in the center for the large supporting wall of the, the carport side, which is getting repaired and we're working with the...
Was there a reason that you didn't go back to the city when you realized that this is, I think you closed on your house July the 7th? Is that right? July the 7th?
I don't...
And then you applied for this permit on the 16th. Is there a reason you didn't go back to the city when you realized you were ordering a larger building and tell them that you were ordering a larger building to see if...
No, I think you have the timeline mixed up. That's when I first, on the 17th of July, I submitted for a 35 by 32 permit or whatever it was, a really large building. That's what we were going to put down and they said we couldn't do that. That's why we made the change for the smaller carport. And the lean-to, those was added to, reduce the size of the overall building, which is what I thought we were getting penalized for was for the carport, not the lean-to. As the lean-to is not even mentioned in the ordinance, both for Polborn.
But you didn't notify the city after the fact just to tell them that this permit that they issued for the 30 by 20 was not, you just went ahead and put up the larger building, is that right?
No.
I'm just trying to get your timeline together so we...
We put up the building, but we didn't put up the entire 35 by 32 building. So, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding.
I think this is actually getting into the definitions and how they're kind of hard to understand.
Yeah.
Understanding the carport because it has walls as the building.
Right.
The lean-to, he's not considering and did not think that was a building. He just thought that was an extra little shed.
So, the entire, the entirety of the building as it stands, what are those dimensions as it stands right now?
Including the lean-to. It's 35 by 32. It's the original, it's what I originally requested in the permit.
Okay. So, the lean-to, is that right, buildings department? So, the lean-to, so we're, that's what we're talking about here? Okay. You can understand from the board's point, there's some confusion. It's like, we keep talking about adding the lean-to, but we're not, we're not really clear on the overall... Anybody got any questions?
Can we explore further the proof of the unnecessary hardship? The directions that we have in front of us says there must be proof of unnecessary hardship. It is insufficient proof of hardship to show that greater profit would result in the variances if the variances were granted. Furthermore, the hardship complained of cannot be self-created nor can it be established on the basis by one who purchases with or without knowledge of the restrictions. It must result from the application of this ordinance. It must be suffered directly by the property in question and evidence of other variances or non-conformities granted under similar circumstances shall not be considered. Can we discuss maybe the hardship a little bit better and help me to understand that?
Sure.
I can explain part proportion of that. The, we have an additional shed that was built, that we purchased after the carport that we did not know was required to be reported to the city because it's under the 200 square foot requirement. But it turns out that the interpretation the city has, not my interpretation of the ordinance, says that it's supposed to be combined total of what's on the lot, including the house, or rather, the accessory buildings, the total, not the individual. And I still do not see in the ordinance where it calls out for a combination of the shed and the carport to exceed the overall total. The, other than that, the only other hardship that we had was of the location of the building, which we took care of in October and the, or the zoning board in October.
I think he wasn't, what hardship are you going to suffer if this variance is not...
Oh, yeah, we have to...
No, no, I don't think it's...
That's not what he's asking.
No. For the variance to be approved, what kind of hardship does the property, do you have that would grant us approval?
Oh, I'm not sure. The only hardship I can see is if we tear it, if we tear it down, if we not, it's a hardship that I'm suffering by not getting approved. Is that, I'm still...
No, no. The hardship to the property itself. Doesn't have to do with the approval, right? That's a, the hardship to the property itself. Is it because you're not going to be able to use it?
Well, if I can't use my land to the fullest, which is why the second portion of the variance, we're asking for the almost, the, just a small, less than 1% portion of the overall uses of the total lot. It would bring us to 25.6 or 7% by allowing us to have that. By not allowing us to have that, we have to tear it down. But I don't know where we find that happy medium where we can use our lot to its full potential. We don't plan on building at the property anymore. That was why we moved it. We wanted to build.
Is this a drawing, if you submit this drawing, the drawing that the building inspection department has, is this a drawing that you submitted when you applied for the permit?
Not the initial one. That was the second one.
But this, on the approved permit that you received?
That's where the carport belongs.
That has your signature. This is the drawing that you submitted, right, with that one?
For the, for the carport or no, not including the lean-to, that's correct. Yeah, in, in the ordinance, I could, I could not find anything that restricted us from building a lean-to or dimensions of lean-to. That's why we removed the overall, the overall size of the initial permit request down to just the carport side and then created, reduced that to make it a lean-to because it, we didn't think, according to the ordinance, that it was considered a structure or a building.
Did you discuss with the building inspection department of a lean-to, it says the property you were issued the ordinance, did you discuss a lean-to with them at the time?
No, I first told them that I wanted the 35 by 32, whatever it was, the larger one.
And they said, no, and then...
And then we changed it.
But you agreed to the 30 by, but you did agree to the 30 by 20 by signing the...
Right, because...
...inspection. You agreed to that, right?
That ended up meeting the requirement and then we changed it down so that the lean-to was added instead of it being an entire building of the initial dimensions. There's no walls to it. It's open. I don't know if there's pictures of it there. It's, it's just, it looks like a, a patio over a house.
And I will say, let's divide this into two motions for more, the motions. You know, because she is asking for a minimum increase on the second part of that. I don't know that anybody has any questions on the second part from the 25 to 25.72.
What's the first part they asked for and the second part? What's the difference?
So, the first part for the, would be Section 5-9D to increase the percentage of the area to the accessory building from 25% to 35.6 and then a variance to Section 4-11 3.5 to increase the maximum 25% lot coverage for main accessory buildings to 25.72.
I would like to add, I think I mentioned this last time, but the board has approved up to 38% for similar cases where they're going from the 25 to 38% and we're asking for 35.6. We're asking for quite less than that.
I will say that every case has different...
Oh, I understand.
...scenarios or what happened or what, you know, we, we...
Absolutely, I understand.
Something that, yeah. They would have a reference to here because it's independent of it. Anybody else with questions? Yeah. Any more questions, Steve?
Well, the board is a supernumerary. I, um, they asked Johnny a question, engineering.
Yes, you can ask him, Johnny, one question.
Johnny? Normally, when we're concerned about lot coverage, et cetera, we're also concerned about water runoff, et cetera, caused by that. In this case, there's no, is there any concern about that due to the additional coverage of this lean-to? Because I'm assuming he's sitting on a concrete pad anyway.
Not according to the engineering department, from what I have discussed with him. I went by and asked them as part of my due diligence and, and they did not have, they would, they require that that, they look at that with the permit. And I asked him if there was any issues because they did not have any, that I remember.
I think, oh, sorry. I think this was the only comment they had, um, from engineering.
There's a fairly large easement on the lot to the south.
And we did...
Running along the back that you can dump water into.
Yeah, we did approve the 2.25 after it set back at the last meeting, so... Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak? If you guys would just, just kind of have a seat there just a minute? If you'll come up to the podium and state your name and address and tell us what you're concerned...
My name, can you hear me? My name's Chris Chapman. Address is 207 Bright Parkway, which is directly behind the property in question. I'll start with the most recent statement. The lean-to is defined, whatever we want to call this, additional building has the same roof coverage if it was the big building or the smaller building. So, when you talk about runoff that the, that the engineers would have looked at, the lean-to does create more runoff than the original building that was approved. So, as the property to the south, roughly at a grade of about eight to nine feet below that property, that runoff will run into my yard as well, so that is a concern.
Okay. Hold on, just a minute.
He's not, he's not with me. I don't know.
Okay, we're going to let you speak. Hold on just a minute.
I want to, I want to address a couple of things. The only reason I'm here is the same ordinance and laws that are in place today should protect me as a landowner. I have nothing personal against the landowner that's trying to build this wonderful building for his hobbies. When addressing it for agriculture, no one asked the question of what is the purpose of the building itself and what is it being used for? From, from my perspective, all it is is to store an RV. The carport or this lean-to is defined as a carport. The residence also has a, a multiple car garage that can be used, so there, I don't understand where that really applies to any property value diminishment if, if this building didn't exist. Number, the first point I want to make is, from what, and I have no attorney present, so I did all this research on my own. Ultimately, the way I see the fact is the building was approved. Lot was approved, was not built. That was clear. For someone who signed up as the... For someone who signed up as the contractor, should be common knowledge of the codes that would be enforced on that building. That was ignored. The structure was built in one or two business days, over a weekend. Once code enforcement was engaged, they requested to be stopped for multiple reasons. There is a direct, if you look at the residence, as far as the height of it, if you take the actual height from my perspective of my backyard, the actual building is about 84 feet tall. That's my perspective. So take the 35, and the fact that I am that low from my perspective, it covers about three quarters of my view to the setting sun and the, as it sets at night, which, again, not here to talk about how ugly the building is, I get it. Couple other things I want to talk about is the facts. We talked about square footage. The square footage of the property when it was purchased, based on multiple locations from a value perspective, was roughly 2,500 square feet. Being purported in the actual assessment and the percentage using is referencing about 3,800 square feet. The math doesn't make sense. I understand that there was an engagement with the tax lord to change for the first time, and I asked that person today, for the first time in limestone history, someone's come to that board and said, with no permit, with no construction, I would like to increase my square footage from a tax perspective. And the reason why I think that is, and again, this begs the question of how did you not know? You went in, you asked for the square footage of your house from a taxation perspective to be increased, so that the percentage of the lean-to that they're asking for doesn't look like 35%, but it looks like a little bit over 25.7, otherwise known as 10%, when if you look at the inside calculation of the house, using the 2,500 square feet, that's actually a 47% comparison to the structure. The other aspect of the safety of the building is the fact that the, if there was a large wind event, as the lean-to sets today, does it pass code that the construction used to hold down that, that actual roof? Will not apply that roof falling into the other subdivision or other houses, as well as, like I said, the water that goes back into that as well. I want to note, in the emails that Judy Harvey, the chief appraiser, sent, the landowner, she references, and I quote, "I hope this, these numbers help you get your variance." I think that that's a little biased. I think that she should be protecting the interest of the city and the state. And that type of language, then again, doesn't make me comfortable that the committee is protecting my rights as a landowner, and it looks like it's only on the behalf of the, of the person with the building that was not approved, but built anyway, and is a, and from my perspective, is a, is an eyesore for that reason. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Hey, next, I think, yes, sir. If you'll come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Dave Morris. I have 205 Bright Parkway. And I was here for the last picture. You have pictures of it. I wonder, from the engineering standpoint, where the easement is, because the back of their cement and the shed is within three or four feet of our fence, our joining. It's at the corner of our fence, mostly on 207, and about a third of it on 205. So it comes down, and there is an extreme water problem, because it slides right down the cement and comes down my yard. Now, we have a big swoop that they're calling an easement, because we're at the top of the hill, and so we get a lot of water through there to begin with, but this is coming up above and going over our easement and coming down into our yards. So I know, and I don't mean to be critical or any of that, but you said basically last time, that our feelings or our hardships were not really a cause for you to have that, let's face it, illegally built construction taken down. The height didn't matter, nothing mattered. You gave to him the easements for four and a half foot easement, where there, and he's only two and a half feet. That, we were, I would say harassed by a next door neighbor that called me personally a bigot for a community note that I sent around, and we sent around as the people behind it. And calling us redlining and just not necessary whatsoever. Again, this might not matter to y'all. There was a lady that gave her, that lives close to you, that gave her opinions of everywhere she looks in her house, there is that thing. The only thing that you gave us was to take down that side piece. And now, it looks like you may be giving it back to them, and I have to agree with my neighbor that I don't believe that you are taking our property values. I still think that there's a big wind problem with it. The wind comes from the west, and the rain comes from the west, and that could come right into my backyard, right into my house. And I don't know that that has been addressed, or if it's even part of y'all's, what you look at, but that is a major problem for us. And I thank you for your time.
I want to say, on behalf of the board, we do appreciate everybody that's here and your opinion. From an engineering perspective, we have the inspection department that inspects the safety of it. The city issued a permit for a 30 by 20 to be built based on the ordinance and the zoning code. Had that building been constructed, according, you know, from our perspective, we wouldn't be here today had it been a 30 by 20, as the permit was issued for. We wouldn't really be here having that discussion, so I don't think that we, you know, want y'all to take an extremely negative view of what we did. There's certain parameters that we operate under, but while we are here, is that the property owner did not abide by the 30 by 20 he built outside of what he was permitted to legally build in the city of Madison. So. Is there anyone else in the audience here? Hi. Um, again, I will get anything from the- Yeah, do we have any other comments from outside sources, Johnny?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Unless the board has other discussion or other comments, I will, I'd like to, I think, Johnny, you want us to take this in two different motions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we've been instructed to take this in two different motions, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve case number variance 2023-13, 29958, Harmon Road, Harrison and Gammon, PC, by Dustin K. Keith, is requesting a variance to section 5-9D to increase the percentage of the area of the accessory building to the area of the residential building from 25% to 35.6%.
Okay, hold on, I have a second.
Second.
Now, call for roll call.
Mr. Wardy.
Nay.
Mr. Bushman.
Nay.
Mr. Tesla.
No.
Mr. Harbor.
Nay.
Mr. Bianca.
Aye.
Okay, that portion of the motion has failed, and I will entertain a motion on the second part of it, please.
I move to approve case number variance 2023-13, variance to section 4-11-3.5 to increase the maximum 25% lot coverage for main and accessory buildings to 25.72%. These requests are in accordance with section 10-5.
Hold on, I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wardy.
Nay.
Mr. Bushman.
Um.
Mr. Tesla.
Aye.
Mr. Harbor.
Nay.
Mr. Bianca.
Aye.
Okay, that-
Was that Theresa Two?
Theresa Two.
And it failed.
It failed. I'm sorry, that motion fails. If you will get with the city, they will give you the proper paperwork. Okay, next case we have before us is case variance 2023-14, northwest corner of Edgewater Drive and Zert Road, track A, Carriage Hill, pin number 105861. Toodle Top Partners is requesting a variance to section 4-6A-5.23 to allow a veterinarian hospital clinic to have boarding facilities in addition to those required for patient recovery and care for cats only. The request is in accordance with section 10-5 of the city of Madison zoning ordinance. And whoever is here to speak for this, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hi there, my name is Stephanie Murphy, and my, my home address is 4328 Vandalia Street, Dallas, Texas, 75219.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little about what you are presenting to us tonight?
So, yes, ma'am. So, we are looking, we have Catifaction Cat Clinic, which is a veterinary hospital for cats only here in Madison, Alabama. We have been in business now for 13 years today, actually, for providing services to our feline-only patients. Myself, I have 16 and a half years of being a feline-only practitioner. I have, while I love dogs and have two of my own, I am not their veterinarian for them. And then my associate, who is here in Huntsville full-time, has been with Catifaction now for seven years, and is also a feline-only practitioner. We are wanting to expand. We're, as Huntsville and Madison are growing, we are wanting to be able to have a little bit larger of a footprint of a hospital, to be able to, basically to keep up with all of the growth that's here in our community. And while this property that we're looking at does allow a veterinary hospital, it specifically states that there will be no boarding facilities for the veterinary hospital. And what we, the reason that we're here asking for a variance is because we are feline-only, so there will be no outdoor dogs, no rabbits, nothing, literally just domestic cats only. And we would like to be able to continue to provide a service for our clients when they go on vacation, so that they know that their cats are being cared for indoor only in the boarding facility. And so not just cats that are going to be hospitalized, but also for clients when they go on vacation, to be able to continue to provide that service for our clients. Again, you know, our track record here in the community, we've only done cats, there have been absolutely zero exceptions to other species in our practice, so the adjacent neighbors wouldn't have to worry about the noise of barking dogs, they don't have to worry about fecal matter outside or anything like that. All of our patients are required to come into the hospital, whether it's if they're sick or for boarding, in a carrier, and are required to leave in a carrier. So it shouldn't be disruptive at all to the, you know, adjoining neighbors. And that's it.
All right. Does any of the board have any questions for this applicant?
Yep.
Stay right there.
Okay. Okay.
If you might recognize my name, I am one of those neighbors that borders your lot.
Okay.
So I do have some questions for you.
Yes.
So when they tore down a tree, they did not keep the 30-foot barrier that needs to be there.
Mm-hmm.
So you understand there has to be a 30-foot barrier from the fence all the way in to the neighbors, right?
That is what we have read on the, on the variance, and it said that there's a certain amount of landscape that needs to be provided as a barrier as well. I have not seen what exactly was torn down yet of the property as far as the trees are concerned, but we did actually see the documentation, and my realtor is here as well, actually, both of the realtors representing the seller, as well as myself, the buyer.
You guys' realtors are there?
They are. So, but they did bring that to our attention as far as that the landscape would need to be there. And, you know, we plan on having a really nice facility, again, to be able to keep up with the clientele, feline, feline-only clientele, it's, you know, they expect a very different level of care, and they expect a very, you know, our clinic has always been unique, and we've tried to stay as aesthetically pleasing as possible, and we plan to continue that on the outside as well, and be sensitive to the neighbors as far as, you know, whatever trees or whatever is necessary that's written in the guidelines.
And you guys won't be cremating any animals there?
Oh, no, ma'am. We, no. We have an outside service that provides that, so no, we do not. You actually have to have a separate license. Veterinarians are not allowed to do any kind of cremations. You actually have to have another separate license that's all together. So we have our hands full enough with our live patients, but we just don't, no, we're not doing that.
And just when you are building, just be careful to that spot right there, it's very high traffic, and I'll be curious if you, what your plans would be like.
Yes, we're hoping, we haven't started with the process yet of interviewing builders or anything like that. Our goal was to first, it's just kind of fell in our lap. We've been looking for a place for several years, and my realtor, she called, and she's like, hey, there's a great spot, it was an incredible neighborhood. So then we started running numbers, and we actually have about 14 clients that are actually in the Edgewater subdivision. So we're pretty excited about that, to be able to be close to the, you know, close to some of our clients, and then also close to the-
I have one to recommend.
Yay!
Move over. Is there, before, is there any outside comments from neighbors?
No, ma'am, there has not been.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? Okay, now, board, if anybody that has any questions or concerns.
I'll ask if you promise not to laugh. We noted no outdoor dogs, about outdoor cats.
No, we don't plan on having that either.
I mean, they would be enclosed anyway.
Yes, if, you know, one of the things that, if we ever decided to do any kind of outdoor things, it would be like, basically where it's screened, and it'd only be like a window that's screened. A lot of times with cats, 95% of our clientele, thank goodness, have indoor-only cats, and that's something that's super important, it helps in their longevity and just overall health. So whenever we have kitties that are boarded, our, what we're trying to do is basically is to replicate their environment of what they have at home. And if we all of a sudden have an indoor-only cat, and we're putting them in this run that's screened in, it can really stress the cat, and then you end up with other issues such as spraying or whatever, and odor, and that's not what we're wanting to do. If there's going to be any kind of, there will be anything outdoor, it would mainly just be a large picture window for the cat to be able to look out, but there will not be any outdoor kitties or any outdoor enclosures.
And those will have to meet the standards of the city.
Right, absolutely.
Inspection department.
Okay.
All right, well, if the board doesn't have any more questions or discussions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve case number variance 2023-14, northwest corner of Edgewater Drive and Zert Road, track A, Carriage Hill, 10105861. Toodle Top Partners is requesting a variance to section 4-6A-5.23A to allow a veterinarian hospital clinic to have boarding facilities in addition to those required for patient recovery and care for cats only. This request is in accordance with section 10-5 of the city of Madison zoning ordinance.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Wardy.
Aye.
Mr. Bushman.
Aye.
Mr. Tesla.
Aye.
Mr. Harbor.
Aye.
Mr. Bianca.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, if you'll get with the city, they will provide you all the information that you need, paperwork. Okay, the next case we have is case number variance 2023-015, 113 Blue Bell Drive, Aaron Sheer.
Yeah, sure, you did really well.
Requesting a variance to section 5-8 of the zoning ordinance to have a fence greater than two and a half feet along the edge of the front yard, and to have a fence in the front setback. These requests are in accordance with section 10-5 of the city of Madison zoning ordinance. These requests are in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. And if you will give us your name and address, please, obviously we know what your address is, just give us your full name.
Sure, yes, my name's Aaron Shear, um, I live at one thirteen Blue Bell. Um, this is Leah Graham, um, she's gonna come up and...
Okay, well...
She, she's relevant to the story.
Okay. Well, you, you want to come up with him or are y'all doing this together or?
I'm gonna, but she might answer questions, yeah.
Okay, all right, so tell us what you have going on and why you're requesting this variance.
Sure, so, um, I, um, we live on a, a, an odd-shaped lot, it's kind of a penthouse. It, it's like, it's five-sided shape that's kind of, um, in a weird position because it's on a cul-de-sac. So it, it's just a weird-shaped lot and we're requesting that, um, for a variance to, um, allow a fence that we built to remain where it is, which is essentially, um, it'd be a variance to change the front yard setback. Um, the fence at its closest place is ten feet from the street. Um, and the variance are, and the ordinances as written, um, and as determined by, um, the team that wrote, uh, um, the recommendation and the report, um, it, they believe it should have been thirty. So, um, yeah, um, I'm, first I want to thank you all for hearing us out. But I also want to thank the planning department because, uh, we were very persistent and, you know, they took a lot of time to work with us and they were responsive and, um, offered sympathies. Some, some members expressed that, um, they felt that, that they hoped we could get what we were looking for. So, um, I did want to speak on the report a little bit. Um, the, the first part that I wanted to give my perspective on was, um, the hardship. Um, they mentioned that, um, it was not self-caused and the reason for that is, um, I'll script kind of the background. Um, on June sixth, um, Leah went into the planning department to, um, talk to the planning department about, um, where we could place the fence. They pulled up our property, um, and then she showed the plans and they told us that we were okay to move forward with our plans. Um, after that point, we started to, um, we talked to both of our immediate neighbors. I told them our plan to bring down the fence, the neighbors on Daffodil side. We told them that we planned to, um, extend the fence some. Um, and then, um, come September time, um, we were, we scheduled to build the fence. We went to all three of our neighbors this time, the diagonal neighbor as well, um, about the day that the fence is going to be built and we gave them a piece of paper with contact info so they could let us know if they had any problems. And then we built the fence, um, on the twenty-first and twenty-second. Um, and then we received the, um, we received the violation notice on the twenty-fifth. Um, so I, I know you mentioned that profit should not be a reason for hardship. I, I did want to express that, um, it wasn't self-imposed and, um, and it wouldn't be profit, it would be financial burden, you know, the, the thousands of dollars to, for, um, to build, to get the materials and then, you know, um, to build it. And then if we're not granted this variance, we'll have to pay to move it again. Um, as far as hardship on the property, um, I already mentioned that it's an odd-shaped property. Um, and as part of that, just to kind of express how odd it is, um, if our, if the house was picked up and rotated thirty degrees and then placed back down, no different distance to the road or anything, we'd be granted ten more feet for the fence. So it would be a twenty-foot setback instead of thirty-foot, um, and I believe that's in section five-ten. Um, and then if our house had been built in nineteen ninety-four instead of nineteen ninety-two, we'd be granted five feet. Um, so it's just a little, the, the house is in a, in a situation where, um, a couple of things come together to make it, um, not acceptable by the, the written rules. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about was that in the report, they talked about how, um, the home would not match the, um, aesthetic of my neighborhood and of, um, other R two, um, zoned neighborhoods. Let me see. Um, and that it would be a special privilege to grant us what, um, we're looking for. Um, so I, on Monday, I took an hour to, um, drive around a couple neighborhoods. I, I, um, made a circle that was one mile from my property and I chose three of the five, um, neighborhoods to drive through just to see if I found anything. Um, the pictures are six of the homes I found, um, in, but I didn't show pictures of all of them. I actually found twenty-three homes that would be clear violations of the ordinances. Um, and by that I mean, they were all under twenty feet from the street and these are all corner lots. Um, and most of them were under fifteen feet, the, the majority of them. Um, and then also, um, the planning department can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I also believe that front yard setback starts on the inside of sidewalks. So in those pictures, all the ones you see on sidewalks, they are, I, the fifteen feet and the twenty feet I mentioned earlier, that was to the street, but most of those, if you do it from inside the sidewalk, it's more like four feet, you know, um, for most of those. Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I don't really see it as a special privilege because it, it seems very commonplace and I also feel that, um, I, I don't know if these homes went in and got their fences approved and they got built because it seems like there was some confusion within the department. The ordinances are very confusing. Um, all, there's an eighty-page range of, um, of ordinances that apply to the situation. Some overwrite others, some contradict others, um, and it seems that confused them. We were cited for five-three, but it doesn't seem like my home's in violation of five-three. Um, it's over, it needs the requirement by over double. Um, so it seems like there's a lot of confusion, it seems pretty commonplace, so, yeah.
Okay, um, I have a question for you, is your, do you have an HOA or?
We do not.
There's no HOA in your neighborhood? Um... Okay. Uh, yes, sir? Uh, um, could you come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please? Just give us your name and address?
We have neighbors across.
Yeah.
My name is Charles Orwin, I reside at one three nine Blue Bell Drive, which is very close to this gentleman's home. And this is the covenant for Metalview subdivision. And it identifies conditions which are not allowed. All the fencing in Metalview subdivision has to be located behind the house. There's no fencing at all in front of, of the house or to the side of the house. And that condition is found in the Declaration of Restrictions, Conditions, Covenants for Metalview Subdivision, Second Edition, Phase One, every subdivision of Law Three and part of Law Two of Metalview Subdivision, Madison County, Alabama.
Okay, um, and the reason I'm asking, no matter what this board decides to do, you, the covenants of the subdivision carry the most weight. So whatever we decide to do, you will have to rectify that with... Am I right?
They're mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
Here, what you're doing is, um, based on the zoning code and if you're going to grant relief to the zoning code, the covenant is a private restriction that they would have to mitigate themselves.
Okay, so, but I, I don't want to, and the reason we say that, we don't want to give any misleading, we've had to say this before, that when HOAs get involved and covenants carry a stricter version. So no matter what we say doesn't mean that you can still do what you want to do. You have to abide by the covenant, even if we give you relief of that, so I just wanted to...
But you haven't done approach, I don't know about that. I don't, you know, we get...
I live at one...
This gentleman seems to have the information there that you can, we'll wait till I'll do that on your own, okay?
Yes, I tried to, I do, I guess it was on Saturday. And I rang the doorbell at home, but there's no doorbell. And I knocked on the door several times, nobody responded. So I apparently missed my opportunity to talk to you.
Okay, well, we, like I said, well, that's, that's exclusive of what we do, so if that's something that we all will have to work out on, on your own. Uh, is there anyone else here that has a comment about, uh, okay, sir, could you let this next lady behind you have the podium and if you'll give us your name and address and state your...
My name is... Roy Carter.
I'm sorry, come up to the microphone, please.
Roy Carter, and I live at one, one-five Blue Bell. Um, they are our neighbors far back.
Uh-huh.
And it is, we both live on corners, so the way his house is situated, for him to have enjoyment in his backyard, it's not really his front yard, it's his side yard. And we would have the same issue. And we don't have an HOA board. I was never approached, when I bought my house in twenty fifteen, matter of fact, they told us that those covenants were never, were no longer valid, that we had no HOA. So, you know, that's why I'm like, there is no HOA.
Okay, now, like I said, we're just asking the question because we don't get involved in it. That's exclusive of what we do.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, there's no problem with his fence, I mean, he's right behind us. I mean, he doesn't, the way my house sits, it's on a different road. He faces Blue Bell and his side road is Zap, is Daffodil and I'm on Blue Bell around the corner, but it doesn't have any issue attached and we're adjacent home.
I, I did ride over there and ride through the subdivision and, and take a look, um, um, whatever that's worth. Um, I'm gonna have to let the board ask any questions if you have...
Um, ma'am, you're...
Ma'am, thank you, your...
Well, no, I, I just wanted to clarify, you're, are, are you opposed to the fence or, no, okay, I just...
No, it's his yard.
Just did completely, okay.
Doesn't do anything it wants to in his yard, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it's, you know, it doesn't, it does not hurt to see, I mean, you can't, you can see around it when you're pulling in. Um, our, our neighborhood is not well-traveled unless there's an accident at Brown's Ferry in Sullivan or West Rihanna. That's the only time that people will come through our neighborhood to, you know, then turn around and go around if it's blocked. But our neighborhood is pretty much just us in it, so...
Okay, thank you. And then, sir, do you have a comment?
My name's Robert Brooks, I live at one-eleven Daffodil Circle, which is directly behind their house. Um, they did come to us and say they wanted to extend the fence. I was good with that up until they first put it up. Um, and they've, they've already moved it back once. Um, when it first went up, it was about four feet from the street and it was eight feet high at the street. Um, I had contacted my father, who actually owns the property at one-eleven Daffodil Circle, asked his advice, um, we talked about it, went back to the Aaron and said, it needs to come, it needs to go back, it needs to come down, it's too high, whatever. Um, and my father actually agreed to write a check for eight hundred dollars to move the fence back six feet or two ten feet from the, from, from the street. Um, our problem that we have now is from our driveway, from the front of our house, and we've lived in this house for twenty-one years. Um, we can no longer see the entrance to our street. Um, we can't see anybody coming in. We have, in the past, I don't know that it is as big a deal now as it used to be, but we've had lots of children in the neighborhood. And our neighborhood has one way in, one way out. So kids ride bikes, kids ride go-karts, dirt bikes, whatever. And if they're in that cul-de-sac and a car comes in, granted it's low speeds, but, you know, it's just kind of a hazardous situation with the way the fence follows the curve. And, uh, so from our perspective, I know that we can't necessarily, he, he's, he's entitled to build to within ten feet of the street. That's ten feet to the street is easement. Um, and I, I'm okay with that, but to a certain point, when it, when it starts to block our view, you know, we have no view anymore. It's all fence. Um, so that, that's kind of where we stand. It's not pretty, not pretty is not, I mean, it's a nice-looking fence, but from our perspective, we can't see all the way out the neighborhood like we used to be able to. Um, another issue, and it's not really that big a deal unless there's a problem, North Alabama Gas Line now runs through their backyard. Um, they talked about wanting to put trees back there. You put trees back there with the gas line, how long is it going to take before the roots impose on the, on the gas line and cause a problem? So, um, we would request that the variance not be granted, but, you know, that's from my perspective, so...
Um, we have a letter from, um, Jay William Brooks, is that your father?
Yes.
Okay, does everyone have a copy of this letter? There's no need for me to read this out loud? Okay, um, okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Did you have one, more comments, sir? I'm, I'm sorry.
He said that he had photographs.
You have photographs? I, I think we have some here, did, did, did the members of the board, did y'all have a chance to go out and look at it? Um, Johnny, if you could hand those to me? Uh, while we're waiting for those, well, we got them now, never mind. Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, all right, so this is, this is it. So I think from the city's perspective, there's a question for where, you know, the front yard, what's front yard? What's, you have to identify on the side yard. So I did drive out there so the fence comes around and then, I don't know, am I safe to say it's about three feet from the corner of that front?
Oh, from, from my house, yes, it's, yeah.
And, um, so...
That should be in the report also, but I never had to...
All right, thank you, sir, Johnny, thank you, hand that back. Um, I have a question because one of the staff recommendation and, and, and looking at the alternative recommendation, I understand what you're saying. I also understand that following that curve of the sidewalk, um, it's, it's a lot of fence and it's close. Are, and one of the staff recommendations is that the portion of the fence that is non-compliant, so if they took out the curve, does it make sense from the drawing that y'all are looking at? This is what I'm questioning. Um, I've had them straightening that, giving them, uh, an option if you chose not to agree is to him to take out the curve and straighten that fence, make it run straight, you know, like from there this way. And then that way it doesn't block the, the cul-de-sac from the view to the stop sign?
Basically moving ten feet back, Johnny, was basically a compromise, five to ten feet.
It would take the bow, moving...
You know, would take the bow out of it.
Bow out of it.
So that would put it at the twenty-five foot setback instead of the thirty, is that right? Okay.
Uh, Matt?
Yeah.
Knows way more about this case than I do.
This is like, kind of, I must take it with a grain of salt, but I did want to point out that you can see their, you can't see their full driveway and anybody parked on this curve from in front of my house, um, before you've been around the corner.
Yeah, I, I, I was out there and, and looked, I can see, I can see it from both perspectives, but I understand, uh...
And then we did also...
Y'all, let's see this, pardon me.
We did also understand that the front fence is a little bit a lot right now and, you know, we plan to stay in the... you know, we plan to stay in it somewhere natural to make it look better. And then, we wanted to do some lampade and break stuff a bit, because I thought it would make more feelings, so we, of course, we're off, we're sure we're gonna keep the fence. We do, we do, we do want to make it more big. I also feel I should respond a little bit to his comments, just because.
Like I said, when it comes to the, to, to, to the covenants and conditions, it's really outside.
Nothing covenants, it was more about, um, I, I just wanted to emphasize that we did try really hard to work with the neighbors, you know. When we moved the fence back and reduced its height, the height was because we saw it and were like, yeah, that doesn't look good, we don't want to make the neighborhood look worse. But the moving it back was just to be nice, because it was making the yard less like we wanted it. But we saw that our neighbor was upset, and we wanted to make things right. At the time, we believed that the city had approved our fence, so we, we didn't have to move it back. We were really just trying to be neighborly. We want what's best for the neighbors, the whole reason we actually replaced the fence this year. We've been trying to make our house more presentable. We've, um, we did two planters this year, um, and then we, the fence was falling apart, so we're like, let's pay up the money to make our neighborhood a little bit nicer. So, I just wanted to kind of give a little view into what we're trying to do with the fence.
Um, I'm gonna read this letter from Mr. Brooks, just for public record, and it says, uh, this is from Jay Williams Brooks. Um, it's dated November the thirtieth, and it's in reference to the variance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. Dear Mr. Blizzard, I've received your letter regarding the subject of variance request. First, let me thank you for recognizing and addressing the issue. As you can tell, I am the absentee owner of the adjacent property at one 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 Daffodil Circle. My tenant is extremely upset and had contacted me when the fence in question was first being installed. Originally, I was a little skeptical about the situation, but after seeing some pictures of the impact on especially the safety, but also the appearance of the entire neighborhood, I drove down to see for myself just how bad it is. It was worse in person than in the photos. I think it is unacceptable for the fence to remain as it is, and therefore feel strongly that the variance should not be granted. It is clearly a safety issue. Visibility for automobiles both leaving and entering the cul-de-sac has been dramatically reduced to the point that it also affects those who are driving by the intersection. Additionally, there are no sidewalks in the area, so there is a significant amount of pedestrian traffic in and around this intersection. Also, with the street being dead end with the cul-de-sac, children frequently play in the circle. It makes the cul-de-sac from, go back up in there, I think that's what he's referring to. Their visibility out is impaired as that of traffic blindly entering. As I understand, it was suggested to the gentleman that it might be a good idea to check some things out before he started the build. He clearly didn't follow up on that suggestion, had he taken the time. Initially, all this could have been avoided. He certainly wasn't willing to take the time to go through the variance process. There is not an issue of two neighbors arguing about the placement of the fence between their homes. The particular fence appears to negatively impact the entire neighborhood in multiple ways. With the safety of all those who leave, interplay, or just pass by the intersection being my primary concern, codes exit for a reason, I'm, codes, yes, codes exist, I think is what he meant, for a reason. In this case, both safety and consideration of a neighbor's site, lines, or address, and the fence absolutely blocks any view we have from the end of the cul-de-sac. Thank you for considering my input, and I ask you please to not grant this variance. If you would like to contact me, I've included my contact information, and we have that file. Would have any more discussion, questions you'd like to? And I will entertain a. Wait, 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 wait. Well, she, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you, you'll have to come back to the podium again. The only traffic that is impeded on that circle would be if they were going the wrong way. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, so I'll be looking for a motion.
I move to approve case number variance two zero two three dash one one five, four one one three, Blue Bell Drive, Aaron Schreger. Is requesting a variance to section five dash eight of the zoning ordinance to have a fence greater than two point five feet along the edge of the front yard, and to have a fence in the front setback. These requests are in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison zoning ordinance.
Does there any alternative recommendations, or we're just gonna follow that? Do I have a second to this motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Lauren Dean?
Hi.
Mrs. Bushman?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Nay.
Mr. Harbor?
Nay.
Mr. Bianco?
Nay.
Motion failed, if you'll get with the city. I think if you'll get with Johnny and talk to him, they'll give you a way that maybe it's not gonna work.
I told you, I did two motions sometimes, would you do one for the recommendation?
I'm sorry?
Would you do a motion for the recommendation of twenty?
No, I, I, I asked her if she wanted to add a recommendation, they did not.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thought it was in the report, though, that they said.
The, the staff recommends that there could be some recommendations, but that was not included in this motion. Okay. Okay, our next case is case number SE, and this is a special exception, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four, three one two Palmer Road, Suite A. Pirate BJJ LLC is requesting a special exception as authorized in section four dash nine dash two of the zoning ordinance to allow an indoor commercial recreation in the form of a karate studio. This request is in accordance with section ten dash four of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. Hey, who do we have to speak to this? I don't have any ones for this one. Yeah, okay. Wait, 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 can we just take one second? I have a question. Can we go back and, oh, can we go back to the other one and do this, or? I don't know, I don't use any people. Does that make it easier for them to get switched out, or? Okay, let me have the, can, give us just a minute, let me talk to the attorney.
You can, uh, pose a motion to set aside a previous vote, but that would be required, I think, before you could.
Okay.
With a new vote.
Okay. I mean, well, okay, so, so, just hold on a minute, that's why I was asking on the staff recommendation. So, would you like, would this board like to set aside the previous decision on case number, uh, variance twenty twenty-three dash zero one five?
A second?
No, I need a motion, I can't make it on two.
I move to set aside the previous vote from case variance, um, twenty twenty-three dash zero one five.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call.
Ms. Lauren Dean?
Hi.
Mrs. Bushman?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Harbor?
Aye.
Mr. Bianco?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's do this again. So, I can't. Would I just read that? Johnny, give us a little, uh, homework. So, the staff recommendation is that the portion of the fence, there's a couple of warnings here. Um, the alternative recommendation, I don't blame her, this can be a little bit confusing. So, so, the staff recommendation, I'm gonna read this out loud. Staff recommendation, uh, recommends that the portion of the fence, first, they do not recommend approval, okay? But then, I'm down on the reading, that the portion of the fence that is non-compliant with the ordinance be modified to comply with section five dash eight, whether by reduction of the height or relocation of the fence out of the required front yard setback. So, I could say that as well? Yes, and that you can read on down, and it says, R, you put the alternative graphic depicts the existing fence, a required thirty-foot setback, and is a, so.
That would be a contention approval?
Yes.
From the motion, contingent upon recommendation.
Yeah, as long as the, the alternative recommendation.
That would be contingent upon that. Yes, sir.
The words to, I'm sorry, the one from up the front of the house? Yes, thank you. Um, no, actually, just hang on, I'll see the next one.
Any, try.
Um, this gate, it's a two-door gate, it's like, right where that twenty-five mark is on the overhead view, um, so, if you do this motion, it's really, I mean, kind of.
Well, let's use this one right here, because I think, I think everybody can understand, so.
This, my gate is like, right here, and it's super close to it, and I, I guess, it's, it's like, it's so close, and the gate costs, I mean, this is so much, it's eight hundred dollars just for the gate worth, so, if there could be like, the motion, it would still be for twenty-five feet, but just so I could keep the gate and then, you know, make sure, um, if, if that's, if you, what, what do you guys feel is appropriate, I, you know, it's just so close that I didn't want to.
I gave it to the, okay, you're gonna make this motion, yeah. Um, okay, so if you read through it, and then, and, and.
You would need to amend our recommendation if you're gonna allow the gate.
I'm sorry?
You would need to amend our alternative recommendation if the gate was to be allowed, because that would encroach into the twenty-five foot.
I, I don't know that it was, it would be really close, but if you have to remember anything, just don't do it, just vote on now it's recommended, and, and it's fine. We'll just say if we have to.
Okay.
Just making, I got the words together.
I'm gonna entertain a motion from a member of this board. This variance. If you, if you read through your staff recommendations and, you too.
Move to approve case number variance, uh, twenty twenty-three dash zero one five, one one three Blue Bell Drive. Requesting a variance to section five dash eight of the zoning ordinance to have a fence greater than two point five feet along the edge of the front yard, and to have a fence in front setback. This request, in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison. So, I would move to approve contingent upon that the homeowners agree to the alternative provided to them, uh, with the six-foot side fence, with approved, or include a fence greater than no more than two and a half feet along the edge of the front yard, uh, like what applicant's request, where it currently is placed. Or thereof that the fence is moved back five to ten feet to improve visibility and neighborhood compatibility. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, let me just read this back to be sure, I, so, there's a motion, case number variance twenty twenty-three dash zero one five, one one three Blue Bell Drive, Aaron Scher is requesting a variance to section five dash eight of the zoning ordinance to have a fence greater than two point five feet along the edge of the front yard, and to have a fence in the front setback. These requests are in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. And this motion is contingent upon the homeowner following the alternative as recommended by the staff for the six-foot fence, the variance would include allowing, no, it doesn't make sense. Um, so, so if you start right here, if, if this is the, the portion that you're making the motion on, the alternative recommendation graphics depicts the existing fence, the required thirty-foot setback, and then an option for a twenty-five-foot setback if the alternative were considered for the six-foot high fence. Is this gonna make sense to y'all?
So, what y'all would be, would be a five-foot variance, and it required thirty foot, so they'd be allowed to have it at twenty-five feet as opposed to the required thirty feet.
Okay. All right, so, um, we're still working on that. Right here's where you'll start, this motion is contingent upon the.
I started there.
Yeah, okay.
That entire sense doesn't make.
Yeah.
Real sense for a motion, so that's what I was trying to do with it.
Yeah. It would be easier just to recommend a twenty-five-foot setback.
Okay, so, all right, let's, just say, so, you're, this is contingent upon, um, the setback being reduced to twenty-five feet and lower to thirty feet. Does that make sense? Are you okay with that motion, sir?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, as you said, move it back five or ten feet, it's a twenty-five-foot setback, that would meet engineering's.
Would be consistent with other R two requirements, because he had pointed out earlier that based on the year the property was plotted, they had different setback requirements.
Right.
So, this would be the lesser of the R two.
Twenty-five foot.
Twenty-five foot.
Can he keep his gate with a twenty-five foot?
If he can make it work, then.
Yeah, okay.
And he could do that with a six, with a six-foot fence or a two and a half foot fence.
Correct, yeah, he could do either or, but we're allowing six foot inside, five feet inside the setback.
That makes more sense. I would just say, with, with contingent upon a twenty-five foot setback and a little of a thirty-foot setback. Okay, so, I'll read back the motion. We have a motion on the floor to, for case variance twenty twenty-three dash zero one five, one thirteen Blue Bell Drive, Aaron Scher is requesting a variance to section five dash eight of the zoning ordinance to have a fence greater than two point five feet along the edge of the front yard, and to have a fence in the front setback. These requests are in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. This, uh, approval is, uh, contingent on approval of a twenty-five-foot setback and a little of a thirty-foot setback.
That's.
I second that motion. We probably have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Lauren Dean?
Hi.
Mrs. Bushman?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Harbor?
Aye.
Mr. Bianco?
Aye.
Okay, now then, get with these guys, and they will direct you in the right direction in your fence company. Okay, the last case is case variance, this special exception twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four, three twelve Palmer Road, Suite A. Pirate BJJ LLC is requesting a special exception as authorized in section four dash nine dash two of the zoning ordinance to allow indoor commercial recreation in the form of a karate studio. The request is in accordance with ten dash four of the City of Madison zoning. And obviously, we don't have anybody here to present that, so we will go ahead. Johnny, do you have any information that you want us to?
Just real quickly, uh, they had come to do the karate studio a couple of months, several months ago, uh, and, uh, the property at Tribble and Palmer, it's a little building there, uh, near, kind of near, kind of close to the Madison Utilities across the street. Uh, was it zoned correctly? It was zoned M two, and you couldn't do any kind of, uh, indoor, uh, commercial recreation there. Uh, they went through the process of getting it rezoned to, to M one for the purpose of allowing that as a special exception. So, they've been through that, they went through the zone and, uh, to get, uh, the bit, so that they would be allowed to ask for, uh, the special exception to, to, uh, M one. There has been in that building, uh, I know you're not supposed to take other things into consideration, but there's been dad studios, and there's been, uh, different things in there that's inside, and we don't have any real issue with the, with the use itself, it's enclosed in the building, and, uh, that's it.
Okay. Anyone here, nobody's left in the audience, just have a comment on that? Does the board have any questions from Mr. Blizzard or the city? Other, I'll entertain a motion to approve based on, let's look at the, uh, planning recommendation, the staff recommendations.
Remember the side of your heels that did that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I move to approve case number SE, two zero two three dash zero zero four, three one two Palmer Road, Suite A. Pirate BJJ LLC is requesting a special exception as authorized in section four dash nine dash two of the zoning ordinance to allow indoor commercial recreation in the form of a karate studio. This request is in accordance with section ten dash. This request is in accordance with section 10-4 of the City of Madison zoning board. We, we request a special exception for indoor commercial recreation at the karate studio with the conditions listed, will, uh, as the special exception shall only apply for the requested use at 30312 Palmer Road, Suite A, for a period of five years or until the business license is terminated, whichever comes first.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Lauren Dean?
Aye.
Mrs. Bushman?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Harbor?
Aye.
Mr. Bianco?
Okay, motion carries. Say, do we have any old business tonight? If anybody wants, well, Johnny, anything we need to talk about, any other business? All right, well then, then we'll have a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn. We all say aye.